All right, welcome everybody. I am acting as chair tonight because Chris was not able to make the meeting. So I guess the first order of business is to call the meeting to order at, I have 7:04, Gail?
Yes, that's right. I have that too.
Um, next order of business is the approval of minutes. Any questions or discussion about that? All right, can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the July meeting? Looks like Meg and a second and Barbara second. All in favor, raise your hand. Anybody a nay? All right. Um, hi Linda. Public participation. I'm sure there are people watching, but I don't see anybody here to participate with us. Um, communications? No? All right, moving along to Linda. What do you have to report?
Right, I didn't think I was gonna make it because I was in another meeting.
Just in time, thanks.
I know, I sent Bunny a report. I didn't have much to say anyway. It was, um, you know, right now, the town board is looking at the budget. Going through some budget meetings, trying to figure it all out to get ready for September. And beyond that, you know, tomorrow night, we're going to accept the shadow, the conceptual plan for Shadow Pines. That has been, you know, we've got public hearings and the old, the former Shadow Pines Advisory Committee weighed in and it's been very better. Everybody's pretty happy with us, so we can move forward with that. But that, that's, that's pretty much it. You know, I don't have anything else to report. I can respond if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Linda? No? All right, thank you for that report.
Sure.
Um, committee reports, finance and budgets. Barbara. You're up, you're muted Barbara.
There, thank you. Um, just looking at the budget that Bunny provided for operating income. It appears that we are about two-thirds of the way through the year. And we have spent just under half of our allocated money, so I think we're doing well on that. Um, when we get to the trustee funds. We had some activity last month and I want to explain what we did. We took forty-one thousand, six hundred, forty dollars and thirty-one cents and closed out one of the CDs from KeyBank. And we purchased a CD at Canada D'Agua National Bank. And we got one that was a longer term because the other two that we have are shorter term. And we wanted to just kind of hedge our bets, so we did that. Um, that leaves us with twenty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents in a CD at KeyBank, which will mature on September 4th. I would like to suggest that we take that money and put it in the Money Market account at Family First, where we are going to get the half a percent interest rate that we're getting anyplace else. And have that money more accessible to us in case we need things at this time. So, um, and I went through and at the end of all of this, the transfers, we will have a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars, thirty-two cents at Family First Credit Union in two CDs, a Money Market, a very tiny savings account, and a checking account. We'll have twenty-nine hundred, twenty-nine oh eight in checking. We'll have twenty-four thousand, ninety-five and oh five in the Money Market. And we'll have six dollars and sixty-seven cents in a regular savings account, plus the certificate of deposit. And then we will have sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and thirty-five cents at Canada D'Agua National Bank. Does that make, does anybody have any questions? And all of this is backed up thanks to Gail because she has all the withdrawals and deposits and so forth copied. So you can actually see the paper trail for all of this in there. I have not done anything with the money, the last CD at KeyBank, because as I said, that doesn't mature until Friday, the 4th of September. But I will go there on the 4th, take that money out, get a check, and take it over and put it in the Money Market account. If, if we agree to do that. So I would like to, I, I am moving that we put funds in our Money Market account since the interest rate is similar and we will have access to it in case we need funds.
Okay, so Barbara's made a motion. Um, looks like Rachel's gonna second. All in favor? All right, it looks unanimous. Anybody not in favor? All right, so moved.
And that is about it for the financial report.
Okay, great. Bunny, is there anything you would like to add about the budget or was Barbara's info sufficient?
Oh, Barbara had that, that scoped right. There's nothing specially remarkable about the budget. We are, as it stands for this month, we're running a little ahead in a couple of the materials lines. That's entirely due to sort of the cyclical nature of how we're billed for some of those items. So certainly nothing to worry about. It'll, it will begin to balance out a little better as we progress through the year.
Great, good. All right, we can move on to Personnel Committee and that's me. And I can say that at this time, we have nothing new to share from the Personnel Committee since our last meeting. So we can, unless there's any questions about personnel, we can move on to Strategic Planning. And Rachel?
Hi. Strategic Planning met as a committee and we also met with Bunny, well, Melissa and I met with Bunny earlier this month. We discussed some of the safety and security barriers that we have in the library. Several board members went to surrounding area libraries to compare our setup versus how other libraries are handling safety barriers. And we found that our barriers were a lot different than many of the other libraries. Most just have a Plexiglas barrier and we have shower curtains hanging from the ceiling. So we wanted to raise that issue. This is not part of day-to-day operations, so we felt that it would be appropriate for us as a board to ask the library staff to explore more aesthetically pleasing barriers. And we had discussed in executive session that the funds that Barbara mentioned, that we were not reinvesting in a CD could potentially be used to cover the expenses incurred.
Any questions or discussion about what Rachel's proposing?
I just wanted to embellish that a little bit. We certainly have reasons for having chosen the methods we're using. That was, that the town is implementing this particular method of protecting every town department. I promised Melissa and Rachel that I would submit that some pictures had been sent to me. I submitted all those pictures that, that showed our library in comparison with the other libraries. I sent those on to Tony to look at. I haven't heard anything back about those yet. As far as the replacing maybe the shower curtains with Plexiglas. I examined some of the other libraries. They're not providing the same level of protection for their staff as we are, staff and public as we are. And that concerns me. I was speaking with a member of the facilities team about that possibility. He was concerned that that would not offer the same level of protection. And he told me probably to do that, if we were to choose to go ahead and do it at the, at as close a level as we could to what we're providing now would probably cost about ten thousand dollars. I don't know if that's an amount of money you want to spend. That's even if we can obtain the Plexiglas, which is becoming an increasingly rare commodity. As I said, I inspected what was going on in other libraries. I wasn't satisfied with it. And when I was speaking to the facilities person about it, I was overheard by it. We were just talking out in the public area. I was overheard by a staff member who said, "We feel safe now with the way it is. If you make any changes, we won't come into work." And I had shared that with Melissa and Rachel and I heard that right from the get-go. I, in order to get them to come back to work, I had to provide some level of protection that they felt confident with. So that's where we kind of are now with that.
Bunny, one of the things that you mentioned in terms of getting the Plexiglas was that we would need, at least for the information desk, like a 360-degree kind of coverage. One of the things we had discussed in strategic, our strategic planning committee was maybe because volumes are down right now at the library, maybe we don't even have anyone staff at the information desk right now. And that would actually cut down on the cost to get Plexiglas for the front desk and the children's room. So I guess that was just another idea. I know you had said it's very expensive to replace the curtains with the Plexiglas. But that information desk is such a big area and if that's not part of the area that we're looking to cover with Plexiglas, it might lower the cost a little bit if we just focus on the front desk and the children's area.
But how would we provide the service we're providing now? We won't be able to do curbside. We won't be able to take any requests to pull materials and set them aside for people or provide readers advisory to answer the questions that we're getting from patrons calling in and stopping in. Well, I don't see how we could practically speaking completely curtail activity at the information desk.
Can't the phones be rerouted to another location? That line can only be answered there?
No, we're not saying to, we're not saying to give up the services that you provide there. We're just saying to relocate them. So maybe there's not an actual, you know, a physical person at that space. Maybe they're against a wall where they only need a barrier on two sides or three sides. Or maybe they're, you know, in the office answering phone calls.
Well, we'd have to reroute the telephones to some other location, which would involve quite a bit for facilities to have to do.
Or you could just change our message because when you call in, you don't get anyone anyhow. If you don't know your party's extension, you have to wait and you have to go through a whole long thing. And maybe you could just change your tele, your, your message and have it go to the right person.
It still doesn't provide a person at the front that welcomes the, the public in and is available to answer questions on hand if we're all in the back.
I think though that people would come to the circulation desk if they had a question.
They're not really equipped to answer the questions that we get.
But the person who normally worked at the information desk could be stationed behind the circulation desk.
I'll have to think about this one.
So there's somebody out there because a lot of times people don't know that the people they're supposed to talk to are the people who sometimes are at those desks and sometimes not. Because I've been in there and I've seen people kind of looking around and I asked somebody once if she needed help and she said, "Oh, I have a question." There was no one at the desks. And I went over to the circulation desk and said, "Could somebody answer this woman's question?" And this young girl looked at me like she was terrified that I was asking her to do something. And she said she couldn't possibly. And all she had to do was say, "Tell me what your question is. I'll go find someone." But that was, that was, you know, I think that as Rachel said, it's very easy to go over to the circulation desk. And that's sort of a logical step.
And we can have a sign sitting on the information desk directing people that temporarily, please go to the circulation desk with any issue or question.
Bunny, I have a question about, you mentioned that you felt like, that you felt like our method, our barrier method was safer than the Plexiglas at other libraries. Can you explain your, explain what you mean about that?
Ours is able to be sealed up a little more. At other libraries, they have a barrier sitting immediately in front of somebody. But if you walk a couple of steps to the right or left, people can expel whatever into the air. And that can find its way to the staff behind the desk and they're not protected anymore. We also got a report today, the OCLC has been working since the, the whole pandemic with the Batel Laboratories to analyze the viability of COVID. And today they released the, I think it's the third phase of this study that they're doing. And they have found that the virus shows itself to be not viable on flexible plastic after no more than three days, but it is still alive on Plexiglas after five days. Five days was the longest that they studied it. So I'm not sure how much protection the Plexiglas is offering us either if, if it offers a hospitable surface to the, the COVID.
Well, it can also be cleaned easier and disinfected easier than the curtains can. So I think that's, um, you know, if it's, if it's not providing a barrier all the way around or long enough, then that's something we can talk about. But I think the viability of the virus on the Plexiglas isn't something to be concerned about because you can, you know, the Plexiglas you can wipe off fairly easily as opposed to a shower curtain type thing.
Do you know if the shower curtains are to fire code as well? Because I know in schools, they have some strict, you know, regulations on what can be put up just because of the fire code.
Yes, I did check that when they were first proposing to put that up and I was assured that they met the fire code.
So Bunny, you have, you have sent, you've sent those pictures of the Plexiglas barriers to Tony and you haven't had it, you haven't heard back yet?
Right.
So I guess at this point, so we, that, I guess I don't know the answer to this question. Is that something that we need to have approved by the town?
Melissa and Rachel asked me to do that because I said that the, the shower curtain barriers were, that was an idea of our, the head of Public Works who supervises facilities. So we were doing that because that is what the town afforded us. And I, I'm guessing that they thought maybe if Tony could see it, maybe he could overrule that or it would be allowed for us to substitute something else.
Do you know if, um, in the town hall, what they're using? Are they using shower curtains in the town, in the town hall as well?
The whole town, that is, that is the method of protection throughout, in every town department, including town hall.
And the fire marshal has signed off on this? Do we have something in writing? I, I just, when I was on the planning board, the fire marshal was really hard to convince of certain things. And I just...
I checked with the head of Public Works. He said he had checked with our fire marshal and it was, he had, he had approved it.
So we don't have anything in writing?
And I don't have that in writing, no.
Well, why don't we, can, I guess we'll wait and see what response you get back from Tony and just, I guess, keep us posted on that Bunny. And then, um, you know, the board is willing to support trying to upgrade some of the barriers. So I guess we'll just go from there once we hear back from, from Tony.
Okay, and I'll, I'll present to the staff your suggestion about moving us around and just see how well received that is.
We're willing to be supportive of any creative ideas. We're not saying it strictly has to be Plexiglas or something. Just something with a cleaner profile is what we were looking for. The other thing that we discussed with Bunny and at our strategic planning meeting was a freestanding sign. And Melissa had kind of, I don't know the words, made up a little picture as an example, showing a sign out in the exterior of the library. Bunny had spoken with facilities and they were not supportive of the idea. But we also said that we would be flexible in the location of the sign, potentially on the circle, like opposite of the blue post office box so that it's visible from the road without being obtrusive to the sidewalk or anything. But we also asked Bunny to follow up with Tony. I'm going to guess that since you haven't heard from him about one issue, you haven't the other.
When I originally presented all the options to facilities again, they had a problem, the freestanding ones. They said that it provided an impediment for them to do their landscaping and for stone removal. So they were not really enthusiastic about the freestanding ones. They suggested as an alternative, the signs above the door. They also were not thrilled with a sign that looked like it, the whole building was the library. They wanted there to be equal signage for the recreation department. So when I presented that to Melissa and Rachel, we decided to send that on to Tony again to, just to take a look at that and see if that, that was going to be the last word on that or he had something to contribute to that conversation.
And, you know, there's... Go ahead, go ahead Barbara.
There's also the possibility of doing a sign along the lines of what Melissa has proposed because the existing sign that's there now is not legible. I mean, you have to go up to the sign and look at it to see what it says. And it says, "The Penfield Public Library, the Penfield Recreation and the Town Courts and whoever else is there." Because it's dark wood with recessed letters and gold and it's, you just don't see it. You can't see it at all at night. You could just tell that there's something there. It's blocking people's view of the circle. And, you know, I think if they got rid of that, and even if we had a sign that had the Penfield Public Library with our logo and Penfield Rec with their logo on the same thing, it would be much clearer who's in the building.
That's a possibility too. Actually, I've been working with Andrew Urkfits from Recreation. I worked with his predecessors on this too. I would love to see a digital sign for us put out there at the road, similar to the one they have in the front of the Parma Public Library and the new Arundacoit Public Library. And that would give us a little bit of flexibility to advertise programs.
I don't think it needs to be digital to be a good sign. I think sometimes digital in a residential neighborhood, I think the people across the street would object.
That's a possibility and...
I can probably guarantee you the people across the street will object because it will be going on in the, in the dark hours. It won't be on late, but it'll be on, you know, in the evening, in the winter and it will shine in their places. And believe me, they will object.
Well, I, I agree. I just want a second. What Barbara said, that the current sign is not very legible. When I initially moved here, I specifically was going to the library and didn't see the sign and drove right by. So I, I'm just hoping that we can find something that's more visible and eye-catching.
Yeah, that might be a better location if you want a freestanding sign, one not so close to the library. And then that could encompass all the installations that are within the building.
So is that something that you can check with Tony about that, replacing that sign instead?
Yes, I'll wait to see what he comes back with on, on the, the current proposal and I'll say, "Here's an alternative."
Okay.
And see how he feels about that because they currently have to work around that one anyway to do their landscaping, et cetera. So, yeah, that would be one that we could maybe convince them to replace a little, a little more easily than put it in another location.
Okay, great. Thanks Bunny.
Sounds good. Is that all for strategic planning, Rachel?
Yes.
Okay. Byelaws and policy review, anything for us tonight, Mary?
Nothing this month, nothing till November. So we have kind of a low. But November, there's gonna be a lot of action.
Okay. Consider yourself warned, everyone. Let's see, communications. So Niraj isn't here. Meg, do you know, was there, no, well, I'm on that committee too and we haven't met. So I can, I can definitively say we have nothing to share. Foundation Committee, Mary?
We're interviewing to expand the board. And we're also slowly working on the next steps for fundraising during this very challenging time. Because it's not a great time. You can't have an event. You know, it's a hard time to raise money. So we're trying to brainstorm about different ways to try to raise some money.
Great. Good.
And that's it?
Um, all right, Aunt, I'm sorry.
That's it.
Okay, thanks. Um, the Director's Report. Bunny submitted a written report. Are there any questions or comments for Bunny or anything you want to add about that Bunny?
No, I don't think so. I'm not quite, I have a couple of things in the works, but I'm not quite ready to release those yet.
All right, if there's no questions or comments on the Director's Report, um, action items. So I guess we're, action items for next time, we're going to, I guess we're waiting on Tony for feedback on those two, the barriers and also the signage. Is there anything else that we need to put under action items for next time?
I don't know, I don't think we need to wait until next meeting for those though. As soon as you hear from Tony, if you could let us know, we can at least keep moving forward on those things.
Okay, so Bunny will get in touch with Strategic Planning when those, when that information comes back from Tony? Perfect. Um, where am I? Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? I don't think so. Any new business? All right, uh, claims payment authorization. I don't know who the auditor was this time.
Amy, real quick, well Barbara too. Did we make a motion to not... Amy, real quick, well Barbara too. Did we make a motion to not, oh, nevermind, we did. My brain, sorry, to not reinvest the CD. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
That's what I thought, thanks.
Um, claims payment authorization. I don't know, who was the uh, auditor this month? Okay.
Um, should I just make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred and twenty five dollars and one cent.
All right, second? Melissa? All in favor? Uh, okay, looks like we're good. Thank you. And so next month. Where are we? Oh, I don't have the list. Um, would it be Barbara?
No.
No?
No, because I'm the.
No, cause you're the, yes, yes. Um.
Niraj or did he take in another spot? I think he, he would be next, but.
Um, all right, can we, let's name Niraj and then if he, I feel like he stepped in like during the early days of.
I think the first month that we didn't have the normal person do it. I think he was March.
It was March, so April, May, June, July, August. Um, all right, well, well, let's get, let's.
I can do it. I mean, I, I think I'm next after Niraj, so.
Okay. Um, all right, if you don't mind Melissa, that would be great. And then maybe we can just, you know, get back on the regular El Tabet train after that.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Um, all right, I guess that's it. If there's nothing else, then I think that we can adjourn the meeting at seven thirty six. So thank you, everybody.
I'm not being adjourned.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, so Barbara moved to adjourn and who's second? All right, Rachel, sorry about that. All right, thanks, everybody.
Bye bye.
Bye, everybody.